Okay, welcome to the meeting of August 18th. First item is the warrant. Motion by Brian, seconded by Bill. Any discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Unanimous? In the minutes of July 21st.
I'll move.
Motion by Brian, seconded by Bill. Any discussion? If not, all in favor? Unanimous. Wow. Certainly, this is a very, very happy moment. We, I think we all know about the tradition of Milford Legion baseball, and it was no different this year. A bunch of outstanding, unselfish kids, tremendous ballplayers who came together. I remember reading, lost the first few games, then seven and seven. And I remember talking to Coach Mates, and he told me, he goes, "There's something about this kid, these kids, they come together, they work hard, no matter what we tell them, and they'll do, and I think it's gonna be a great season." And it was. Tremendous season all the way, championship, state championship for Legion baseball. And Stephen, that was 11th time?
Yes, yep.
11th championship. Milford baseball is known throughout, when you guys go someplace, you have that legacy, that tradition, that integrity, and everybody knows it. All the way down from, all the coaches, all the board of directors, Chris Marcone, and everybody who volunteers, the fans, great fans. And I remember Elna Gunther, she was a great part of it, and she really, truly loved having that spirit. So, boys, the town of Milford is very, very proud. It went on to the Northeast Regionals, and you made it to the championship game, and five-four. So, that's a great season, and all of you are, we're very, very proud of what you've accomplished. We've had great coaches along the way. I want to mention, I think I know most of them, but I might miss one or two. So now, you've put yourself in that class of coaches, winning the championship. And the tradition, like I said, the pride, the, everything associated with greatness is what Milford Legion baseball. And we certainly want to, once again, thank you again, and also, some of you will be going out to college, some of you will be returning, and we want to wish you the best of happiness and success in all endeavors. We have some nice citations for you tonight, and I'm just gonna read off the names and all that, and then Rick will give them to the head coach, and he can pass them out to you, okay? And don't throw those things away, because they'll be worth money someday.
Yeah, 'cause we signed them.
The, like I said, just an outstanding season. Great, great. It could've, would've been nice to go on, but that's okay. Maybe next year. That's the type of program that we have in Milford, and it's all, once again, because of the great ballplayers, the unselfishness, and the families who support, and the fans who come out all the time. So, boys, great job. When I call your name, just come up, and we'll hand you a citation from the town of Milford, and also from the people of Milford, okay? Dan Mantoni. And Dan Mantoni is a five-year player, and the only, two other players who did that, Bob Pagnetti and Tony Chinapi. So, Dan, great job.
That's a great crowd.
Next is Kevin Lynch. Thank you, Kevin. Brian Espinett. This tremendous lineage here. His grandfather was a great coach and great educator at Milford High School. Charlie Espinett. Matt DeCina. Matt?
He's not here, so...
Okay. Andrew McMillan?
Not here today.
All right. Dan Avery?
He is.
Dan? Thanks, Dan. David Sampson?
No.
All right. Kevin Martinez?
Kevin.
Thank you, Kevin. Next, Michael Ryan. Thank you, Mike. Brendan Pounds? Scott DiCapua?
You're welcome.
Okay. Cam Cassette? Michael Cafarella?
You're welcome.
Okay. Jeff Buzzi. Alex Crotto? Okay. Blake Hill? Blake, thank you. Joe White? And number 18, Cole McNanna. McNanna.
Good job.
Fat boy Brett Crosby?
He's right.
All right. And the assistant coaches, I think we all know Steve Meadows, he's a Milford Legion baseball coach emeritus, a great individual. Jeff Innes, Brendan Wynn, Eric Schoenberg, Tim Walsh, and Mike Spates. Mike? And Stephen, everything starts from the top, and you certainly have a citation as well.
Thank you.
You're at Milford High School, you're a wonderful educator, and we wish you well in all endeavors, and I thank you again for a tremendous season.
Good work. Good work.
Okay, boys, thank you very much. If you want to stay, please do. Good luck. Have a good night.
Thank you.
Bye-bye.
Mike, take care.
Take care, Mike.
If you're 18, 19, I'll stay.
All right. That's a great tradition, a lot of great people involved with Milford Legion, and, you know, having won the championship for the 11th time. I think there can't be too many more teams, cities ahead of us, you know?
No, no, it's a great program, as you said, you know?
Yeah.
And like you said, the volunteers, you know, Chris and Linda Morecombe?
Yeah.
Just put a lot of time into make that organization first-class.
Yeah. Great, okay. Let me see. Next invitation to speak, anybody in the audience who'd like to address the board? Okay, if not, we'll go to the public hearings, National Grid and Verizon, the pole location. But before that, we're gonna go to a recent report by Bob Russell regarding all this, and the administrator will talk about, give us a summary on that. Rick?
Yes, in your packet for informational correspondence is the July double pole report. We've tried to revise it to hopefully make it a little simpler. He's trying to indicate the number and locations now of the poles that are removed, also the number of poles added since the last report, and then a complete inventory also of the double poles remaining. So hopefully, they'll make it a little simpler. They're also trying to improve on the remediation side. They're trying to remove as much of the old pole as possible, then they're going to contract with a service to remove the pole butts. So hopefully, it will be a smoother, quicker process. There are 70 double poles in Milford, I believe, to date. Since the last report, they've removed six, but added three for reliability reasons. But they are currently in the process of removing 16 pole butts, where 10 removals will result in complete remediation of the double pole. Again, I think Bob Russell is making a very concerted effort. You'll also see on the double pole inventory, a list of the Comcast, Verizon, et cetera, who also need to remove wires, and they have what they call ball and court. In other words, whose turn is it to remove the wires? So, trying to simplify it, trying to improve on it, trying to make it easier to understand. So, that's, obviously, if the board members have any suggestions as to something additional they'd like to see. Also, Bob has said to me many times that if you'd like to have him come in periodically, he definitely would be amenable to that also.
Okay, thanks, Rick. Any questions?
No, I, you know, I looked over the new format, and, you know, it's fine. I suppose the only suggestion I would make is just to include a legend with it, you know, because we've kind of lost the codes over the...
Okay, sure.
Over the reports, you know? There's the C, B, N, Y.
Yeah.
So, we'd have to go back to find the legend.
Sure.
Yeah, I mean, I understand it's a moving target, you know? Again, when I, when I look back on the May report, which was the last one we had had, at that time, it said we had 66 poles, and they said they had removed six from the prior one and added three. You know, that would make it 63, but there's 70. So, you know, it's just a moving target, as long as, you know, we have this inventory, we have the dedicated attention from the utility companies, and stay focused on it, then I think we'll continue to make progress.
Okay. Bill, any comments?
Yeah, just a quick comment. It struck me, and I've been looking at a lot of these over the years. What struck me is probably the easiest way for me to reconcile one report to the other, beyond the street. Well, street and pole number, but when the double pole was created, so, because the codes probably are more helpful to them than they are to us, but I think, you know, how long it's been in existence is one of the things. I think when they start printing that, they'll get a sense of some of the frustration that we've had over the years. I don't want to take away from the progress that's been made, but that would be helpful for me.
Okay.
So, I say, keep improving, consider it something, just an opportunity to improve.
Okay. So, Bruce, you can bring that back to Bob.
Yes, I will. I'll see him tomorrow.
All right. The first appointment is National Grid and Verizon Pole Location, Plan 17363549. This is for Mass Electric, I mean, National, yes, Mass Electric and Verizon, New England. Description, Congress Terrace Pole 2, comma, 2-5. National Grid to relocate pole number two, 40 inches, and install new pole 2-5. Pole two is currently in the way of the Gottfried River Culvert construction area. Also for permission to lay and maintain underground labels, laterals, cables, and wires and the above, or any intersecting public ways for the purpose of making connections with such poles and buildings, as each of said petitioners may desire for distributing purposes. And we have the description, and tonight, representing the company is Bruce Cutt. And Bruce, welcome. Feel free to add anything else you'd like to add to this one, okay?
No, that's basically it. This is at the town of Milford's request to relocate this pole, and it's a temporary relocation until the culvert's replaced, and then that pole will be relocated back to its original location, and that new pole, intermediate pole, will be removed.
Okay. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone who would like to address the board on this? Brian, any questions?
No, it seems fine, and I know the highway department wants to get started on this project, so I appreciate your attention on this.
Bill?
No, no questions.
Okay. If not, all in favor? Yes, motion by Brian, seconded by Bill. All in favor? Opposed? Unanimous. Okay, the next one is National Grid and Verizon Joint Pole Location, Plan 17223304. And it's Massachusetts Electric Company in Verizon, New England. Description, Westbrook Street, number eight. National Grid to relocate pole number eight, seven feet, more or less, to the west league direction. This will be a temporary move while work will be done on the Gottfried Culvert. Once work is done, National Grid will remove pole number eight back to its original location in the same language as far as permission to lay and maintain underground laterals, cables, and wires. Bruce?
That's correct, yep.
Okay. Anything else you want to say about this one?
No, it's the same as the other one. At the town of Milford's request, we're relocating seven feet as a temporary relocation until the culvert's replaced, and then it will go back in its original location.
Okay. Anyone want to address the board? If not, Brian?
Yeah, no, it's, again, part of the same project, so I'll move to approve.
No questions or concerns, I'll second.
Yeah, motion by Brian, bill by, seconded by Bill. Any discussion? If not, all in favor? Opposed? Unanimous. Thank you.
Okay, great.
Good luck.
Thank you, good luck. Okay. Next is Kevin Cody, President, application. Attorney Antonellis is here. Hi, Joe.
Good evening.
Okay, this is an application for trading the common victualer all-alcoholic license issued to Milford Sports Club Incorporated doing business as Doc's Sports and Bar and Grill, 340 East Main Street, Duchesnecki, Two LLC, and a transfer of location to 350 East Main Street. We have the information before us. The transfer proposed, the manager is Virginia O.C. Sardini Jr. It's allowed in that area, no outstanding taxes, fire department has no exceptions, no issues or concerns. Transfer of license for a restaurant, all-alcoholic beverage annual. And Attorney Antonellis is the attorney, and all the paperwork seems to be in order, and Virginia Sardini has 100% of the stock. And with that, I'll turn it over to Attorney Antonellis. Joe?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. For the record, Joseph Antonellis, my office is here in Milford. Pleased to be in front of the board tonight. First of all, I want to thank your staff, Mr. Valani and Gene, both for their assistance in getting the application filled out. I think you're aware that the ABCC has modified its application process, it's become more complex, and Gene makes sure that every application that comes in is properly done, and Rick gives me a heads up when she's gonna call me, so I appreciate that. I've been involved with the new licenses before, so I hope I didn't cause them too much trouble. Just for, by way of history, I'm not here for Mr. Cody. Jimmy Roberti is his counsel on this transfer, and I believe Jim might be here before the meeting's over. He had a Conservation Commission meeting in Oxbridge. I told him I didn't need him. So, with me tonight is Gene Sardini. I think the Board of Selectmen know the Sardini family and the investment that they've made in the town of Milford. You know that they're franchisors of Dunkin' Donuts, and they made a significant investment in real estate here in Milford with the 350 East Main Street Plaza, which is the site of where the restaurant will be. You also know that the Imperial Buffet was there. That gentleman bought Mr. Cody's property, tore the building down, and he too made a substantial financial investment in the town by building a new facility. He took his liquor license with him, so to speak. I think you approved the transfer of his license from that spot to the Cody spot, but that license can't become effective, because there's another license here, and my clients are involved in a transaction with Mr. Cody to purchase that license. The Sardini family would like to see a restaurant in its plaza. They believe that at least a portion of the existing space could make a very fine restaurant. They have three letters of intent now from restaurateurs who are looking at the space, two of whom want to use the whole space, one of whom wants to use a part of it. So that will become a business decision on part of the Sardini family as to what they want to do. Gene is going to be the manager under the liquor license. He is the one person in the family who believes he can carve out some time to do it. He does not have any specific experience as a manager of an alcohol license. However, he has significant experience in the restaurant industry in managing people, very well aware of the courses he'll have to take, the tip certification, et cetera, in order to be the manager, but is certainly willing to do that. The plan is to hopefully bring someone in who can manage the restaurant, they will manage the liquor aspects of it, see how that goes, and then we'll go on from there. But Gene will be involved in that process from the beginning. I recently, tonight, just finished supplementing the application, because the ABCC requires specific source of funding. You have a copy of the contract in the application, which shows the purchase price of the license, and then we've estimated another $25,000 to $30,000 in upgrades to the existing facility. That money is coming to Gene by way of an inter-family loan from his father. There's a promissory note that will affect that. We will supply the ABCC, and to the extent that your board needs them, with the backup financial information on where that money came from. Again, that's one of the things that the ABCC has really focused on in the last two years, is making certain that the money flow in these licenses is not connected to other licensees. They want to keep the licenses separate in ownership, and make certain that they, that everybody understands just who's operating. So that's the background on it. We really don't anticipate unless one of the restaurateurs wants to make it smaller, any substantial changes to the building or the exits. The plan that we submitted is the existing building with the existing restaurant showing the exits and the positions of the tables. I thought that was the best way to go. It's always either easier to come in and shrink something down than it is to make it larger. I think that's a pretty good summary of what's gone on there. Again, I thank everybody in the town hall for their help. Gene is here to answer questions if you have anything specific, as am I, and if Jimmy doesn't make it, then we don't have...
That's okay.
We don't have to worry about that part. So, but again, thank you for the opportunity to speak.
No, Joe, thanks for the explanation, and it's always nice to see you and Gene. Give your best to your dad. Whenever any one of us has ever gone to your father for help with doing a project, some type of a cleanup, he's always been there to assist, and I think he, the type of management, the type of person that he is, is so conducive to good business, and I'm sure you'll be the same way.
Absolutely. That's a good word.
And hopefully, this will work out well. Brian, any questions?
Yeah, no, thank you. Excellent presentation, Joe, but, you know, to be honest, when you're here, I thought you were here to make sure they got that pole relocation done on Congress Terrace.
On Congress Terrace! You saw me give you the eye. I jumped that brook when I was a kid all the time.
I'm sure you did. I'm sure you did. So I thought you were here to monitor that, make sure that went through with no hitches.
I remember when there weren't three houses next to it.
Really? Sure.
Yeah. Lucius Plumbing Bar.
Oh, boy.
Amazing.
Yeah, no, this is, you know, I think it's a good application. You know, obviously, with the reputation of you and your family, the business that you do in the town of Milford, Attorney Antonellis, I mean, I have no qualms going forward on this, and allowing you the opportunity to explore whatever business, restaurant opportunity there is, whatever makes the most sense. So I get the sense that it's going to be in that space where the Imperial Buffet was?
Yes.
Okay, that's the location. You said you might downsize it, but it's generally in that, in that location.
And even if it's downsized, it will be within that footprint. And then I'll come back in with a floor plan change.
Within that portion of the mall, or whatever you want to call it.
Correct.
So, I mean, just, the other question I have, I guess, is, so how is the relationship gonna work with a restaurant? Are you looking at chains or other private restaurants? Or how would that work if the license is Mr. Sardini's name, and then the restaurant is gonna be a separate business entity?
If the restaurant, if it's a chain, then they will have their own regulations, and I presume at that time, we'll have to come in back for another transfer at that point.
Okay.
Or, what they, I presume what they do under those circumstances would be, they'd probably buy the corporation, which are the LLC, which is a single-purpose LLC, and then we'll be back in seeking an approval of change of ownership of the LLC. I think that's why we set it up that way, if that happens. But the other possibility is, is that in the interim, if no chains are interested, that there might be some young entrepreneur that comes in, and in that kind of situation, we'll probably have, Gene will probably bring that person in as a partner of some sort, where they, again, there'll be some kind of a sharing revenue, and again, to the extent that that's gonna happen, we will keep the board apprised of it.
Okay, great, yeah.
That's a backup plan.
Okay, great. Yeah, no, I appreciate that, and I was just trying to think through myself, the different levels that you might have to go through on eventual transfers, but, yeah, no, I'm happy to support it, and I wish you all the best luck in having a successful enterprise there.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Thank you. Bill?
Well, as the other members have said, you come from a family who's well-respected in the community, has business in the town, and so we know and understand what to expect from your family. I would tell you to work closely with the police chief, given it's an alcohol license, and it's your first foray into that. We're not gonna ask your counsel to jump any brooks tonight, but you did a great presentation, so I frankly don't have any questions, and can just wish you a lot of luck. Empty buildings don't help, and so we're interested in seeing what you can put together there, and hopefully have great success.
And hopefully, hopefully you'll bring in a nice restaurant.
That's the goal.
Okay. By the way, Joseph, I think that bag's getting kind of old, so I think you should try to get a new one, you know?
I actually took this one out of the closet.
You should be able to collect, you should be able to collect from Jimmy on his...
That's not quite as old as Mr. LaSosa's.
I was just gonna say, you steal that from Attorney LaSosa, I think he's still looking for it.
He tried to get it from me.
All right. Is there a motion for the transfer?
I will move to approve.
Motion by Brian, seconded by Bill. Any discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Unanimous? And a change of location?
I'll move.
Motion by Brian, seconded by Bill. Any discussion? If not, all in favor? Unanimous.
I think you need one more.
What's that?
I think there has to be a specific vote on the manager.
Oh, okay.
Okay. We didn't have that in cars. Okay. Motion on the manager?
I'll move.
Motion by Brian, seconded by Bill. Any discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Unanimous.
You submitted an application on that?
It's part of that package.
Okay.
I didn't know if it was a separate motion. I didn't know.
Okay, because we don't have it in front of us?
Yeah, no.
Because there was a separate query for him, and everything, yes.
Okay.
It's not Genie's fault, it's the administrator's fault.
No, 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 it's not. Nobody's fault, just wanted to make sure that the paperwork was submitted. I mean, I know you know what needs to be done, but I just wanted to make sure that the paper trail followed us.
Two query forms, you have a separate query form locally, and then this state one.
Go back and hop over that brook tonight, will you?
Okay, Gene, thank you.
They're gonna corral it? I liked it when it raged.
Joseph, thank you.
Thank you.
Bye-bye.
Good night.
Good luck.
Good luck.
Thanks, thank you. Okay, next, the Milford Board of Library Trustees. Ladies, gentlemen? How are you, John?
Very well, thank you.
We had a resignation on the Library Board of Trustees, Giancarlo Bontempo, and we certainly want to thank Giancarlo for all his service. So we're here tonight to fill the position. And we have John Burns, George Clemens, Kate Mustriani, Sue Edmonds, and Lisa Bakayaki. So we need five, we have seven. So what's the pleasure? Do we have a nomination on the individual? John?
We are nomin, I am nominating Victor Valenti, who served on the Board of Library Trustees before, and rendered us truly excellent service.
Sure, okay.
Mr. Chairman, I'd be happy to second that.
Okay. Just, any more nominations? If not, I saw him Saturday, and he's very excited to get back on. Is there a motion? Motion by Bill?
Okay, I'll second the motion.
Seconded by Brian. All in favor of Vic Valenti? Unanimous.
I think, Mr. Chairman, a roll call, I think, is required in this case, for both this board and that board?
Okay. All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. Okay. He's appointed.
Good luck.
Good luck.
Thank you very much.
Nice job.
Yeah.
The things that you do there.
Thank you, yes.
Thank you very much.
Take care, Sue. How you doing, George?
Hey, George. Good to see you again.
I keep trying.
Yeah.
See you next, see you next Sunday.
All right.
Okay.
Okay. Next is Sue Clark. We wanted to have Sue come in. I think Sue's been working for a year. Boy, time goes by quickly. Since Sue was appointed, we all know the work that Rutan Bleakley did at that location, it's a tremendous legacy, and did so much for these senior citizens. Now Sue's been there for a year, and be able to build on what Rutan did, and have your Now Sue's been there for a year and be able to build on what Ruth Ann did and have your own legacy after a while. But we wanted you to come in, first of all, to say, uh, the reports are glowing, you're doing a fine job. And you're well-respected, you work very hard. And I think, uh, you're on the side of the senior citizens. And whatever can make it better, what, any way that we can make their lives better. You're there to promote the programs. We've added new programs during the past year. Uh, many, many senior citizens come there on a daily basis for all kinds of plethora of programs. And it's because of, uh, what you've been doing, uh, during the past year and all the volunteers that we have. But putting that aside, you know, we'd like to hear from you, what's been happening and some of the, the good things going on and some of the things you look forward to maybe incorporating over the next year or so.
Great, well, thank you for inviting me here tonight. Um, as you said, we have been very, very busy at the Senior Center. And I, I can't tell you, I know back ten years ago when the center was being built, I was part of that whole building process and I never, in my wildest dreams, thought that this building would be as busy and as full as it is today. I can tell you that almost every inch of the building is used. We have seniors coming in from other towns because they just really like the programs that we're doing. Um, I can tell you that one of the newest things that we've brought to the center is a new database. It's called My Senior Center. And this, this is a web-based, um, database that's tracking all of the activities and all of the services that we're providing to our seniors. Back in, in, uh, the old, the old system was a manual input system. So we would have the seniors come in and sign, sign-up sheets. And then one of the volunteers would have to manually input that information. But now they come in and they were all issued their little red tag and they scan their tag and push what they're going to do. And all of those, um, activities and all of that data is, is collected and tallied. And we're able to do all kinds of reports with it. We are able to generate, um, mailing lists. We can also do a, a callback system. If one of our classes is canceled, we can call the whole class and tell them not to come in if it's a snow day. It's a really good system geared just for the senior centers. So we're, we're really happy to have that here. And that was paid for with a grant that we got from the state, one of the, last year's formula grant. Um, so that's a big addition to the center that I'm really happy about.
Sue, can that also be used, like, uh, is, is it helpful for security reasons also?
Well, it, it is, because we have so much information in there. God forbid something happens to one of our seniors while they're at the center. We have emergency contacts. We'll be able to see if there's any special, um, if they have allergies, you know, what their conditions are. So it, it really is, it's a good security system. It's, I gotta say, it wasn't easy. It wasn't easy getting the seniors to participate because we're asking them for a lot of information. And, you know, they've been told not to give out a lot of information. And, um, you know, scanning their card, that just didn't seem to be right either. But I usually have a volunteer sitting out front and helping them with it because it's technology and technology is difficult for the seniors. But they're really getting used to it. So they come in now, they've got their card and they're scanning away and pushing, I'm going to get bread and I'm going to do this and I'm going to have Zumba and play bingo. And, and all those activities are all carried forward and, and tallied for us. So it really does save us quite a bit of time. And it, hopefully, it'll be able to generate really good numbers for us. The other system I wasn't too confident with, so, really happy about that.
I'm not Zumba, we'll have to go to other some time.
Yeah, you should come for Zumba, it's a lot of fun.
It's all good until I break my hip.
I recently applied for a forty-one thousand dollar grant for the formula grant and we should be receiving that soon. Um, last week, we did have our tenth annual summer cookout. This year, we decided because it was our tenth, we were going to bump it up a little bit. Um, Bob DeVita and his whole crew come in, they usually do hot dogs and hamburgs. But this year, they decided they were going to have porketta, roasted chicken, potatoes. We, hundred and twenty people, it was unbelievable. It was really well-attended. We had entertainment there, they.
Oh, you had entertainment.
They danced, they had so much fun and.
Where you got that guy from?
He was good, though. They really did like him. He had a wonderful voice. And, um, we, we've got citations from Senator Moore and from Representative Fernandez. So that's always nice to have. Um, another thing that we've recently completed is our, you know, I'll call it the man cave, but I know that might not go over so big with some people. Upstairs, we finished one of our empty rooms. It was an unfinished room and with the help of Lowe's, we were able to, to finish that room. And we put the pool table in there, we put card tables in there, we have a big screen TV in there. And, you know, if you build it, they will come. So we're really trying to get the men, because men are a tough sell. I mean, they don't know what they, they don't want to do Zumba. They want to play pool, they want to play cards. So now they're coming in and, and I can tell you, some mornings, we've got all kinds of activities going on up there. So another really good thing that's going on. Our exercise programs, we do have two yoga classes, two Zumba classes, two safe exercise classes and a Tai Chi class. So again, really looking out for the seniors' fitness, trying to keep them healthy. Um, we have a healthy living lunch once a month and, and that is, um, it's a luncheon that's free to the seniors and it's usually provided by a for-profit company that wants to come in and do a presentation to the seniors. So they need to bring lunch. And they're very well-attended. We usually have about fifty seniors coming to those. We have a monthly breakfast that we provide. And, and they're, they're, I have to say, all the activities that we have are very well-attended nowadays. Um, once a month, we go on the road, we, we get the bus from Fox Tours and we take a road trip. And we've been to Gloucester on a lobster cruise. Um, last month, we went to Meredith, New Hampshire, um, to see a play and to eat at Hart's Turkey Farm. We're, we're going back to Meredith for another one. We're going to go to the Born Scarlet Festival, Salem's, um, Cross Inn for Christmas. We're going to the Commonwealth Museum. So there's a lot of activities. And I can tell you, when I first started, it was really hard selling a bus full of seniors to go on those activities. I was pretty much begging them to get on that bus. Now buses fill up. And when we went to, um, when we went to Gloucester, I got on the bus and I'm looking around and I'm thinking, who are these people? Holliston, Hope Deal, we, we had a lot, Ashland.
Yeah, everyone comes to Milford, right?
A lot of seniors are finding out that we're doing really good trips. So they're coming and, and we welcome that. I mean, I, we think it's wonderful. Of course, we have our monthly trip to Foxwoods. We usually don't have a problem selling out that bus. Um, we have, uh, on the last Friday of every month, we do a movie, which is free to the seniors. And they've been, we, we might have twenty-five seniors in a room watching a movie and we give them popcorn. And, I mean, it's, it's just nice. Bingo, every Wednesday and Sunday, they fill that room up there and bingo. That's, that's all I'll say about that.
That's an event.
They like their bingo. Um, we just added a new chess program and we have someone that's teaching it. So, um, it's for beginners as well as advanced stu, um, people that want to play. We have card games, knitting, sewing, um, and these are all scheduled activities. So they have a large attendance. It's not someone coming in and, and just sewing. We have a, a, a class. So, I mean, these are really good activities that a lot of the seniors are, are getting, they're, um, getting involved with, they're interacting. It's a great place for them to socialize. We're, we're trying to do more intergenerational programs. We started a program with a fourth grade class where they, they do, uh, birthday cards for our seniors that are over eighty. And let me tell you, the seniors that are getting these birthday cards from these kids are overwhelmed by them because they're personalized. It may say, you know, "Happy Birthday, Mr. Dino." And, you know, with some fun thing from one of the kids. So that's a program that's going over really, really well. We have, um, watercolor, um, painting classes. And recently, we started a class at night. So on Thursday nights, we do have one watercolor class that, that the seniors are coming in to participate in that. Um, in addition to all of our programs, the hospital uses our facility at night, Monday through Thursday. And they have some really good fitness programs going on as well. So we're thrilled to be able to partner with the hospital. They're there for us no matter what we need and, and we like to be there for them as well. But, um, those are all the fun things. In addition to all of those, we, we are providing, um, transportation services Monday through Friday for medical and errands. So if anybody needs a ride out there, they can call the center. We'll schedule pickup time for them and, um, Bob picks them up in the senior van and it's busy. It's a really busy, busy, busy van. Um, our social services, we, we do have a social worker on staff now. And, and she's, she's incredible. She, um, meets with the seniors, she takes care of all their needs. They may get a phone call that was upsetting to them and she will go through it with them and make sure they understand what's going on. She'll help them apply for food stamps or any applications they have to fill out. She, um, she's able to, um, set them up with home services if they need it through Tri Valley. Um, you know, it's really a good asset having our social worker there. Um, we have the Senior Volunteer Tax Relief Program that will start up again in October, where we place twenty-five seniors and, and that helped them get a seven-hundred-and-fifty-dollar tax rebate on their taxes. So that's been a wonderful program. We do the fuel assistance through SMOC, that's all handled through the center. Um, AARP comes in every year and does tax returns, free of charge to the seniors. Really busy, I think, I, I can't even tell you how many seniors come in and use that service. Um, we just started Weight Watchers. We have a Weight Watchers class going on every Tuesday at ten AM. If anybody wants to join Weight Watchers, I got to tell you, it's a great, it's a great group. They're funny, everybody's supporting each other, um, very competitive, who's the biggest loser in the room? But it's working. People are really losing a lot of weight and it, it's working very well. We have book club, we have a hairdresser. Um, but one thing I always have to mention is our volunteers. We have the best volunteers ever. I don't think that the center could function without the volunteers we have. They put in seventy-four hundred hours last year.
Wow.
That's incredible.
How many do we have, Sue?
Uh, I have over seventy.
Wow.
Right now. And, and they're just, they own that job. That's their job, don't try to take it away from them. It's theirs and they want to do it. And, you know, some of them are, are older than the others. But what I'm trying to do is recruit some younger volunteers too, because we need a lot of help around there.
Sure.
The, the, we're just so bu, busy.
Right.
I mean, we just need help. Um, last year, we, we provided over thirty-three units of ser, thirty-three thousand units of service to our seniors. I thought that was an incredible number.
It's amazing.
And, um, we're, we have fifty-one hundred seniors in Milford and we're servicing thirty, thirty-three hundred of them. So that's like sixty-five percent of the seniors are coming in and using our building. So.
I know, I was going to ask that. So as far as the social worker and everybody else participating and doing everything for the seniors, which is tremendous, how do we do outreach? Is there, um, is there a mechanism, is there a process trying to get more people to become either part of the Senior Center? Or maybe if they had issues that we could help them with, how is that done, the outreach?
Well, you know, I think word of mouth is the best way, is the best resource that we have. We, we publish all of the services that we have in our newsletter. But people are finding out about us from their doctor's office, from, um, other social service agencies. I think, I think doctor's offices are, are really spreading the word. We have people coming in to borrow wheelchairs, to borrow walkers. And the services that we're providing are just, they're, I can't even begin to tell you how many they are. We advertise everything we do through our newsletter. We advertise through our press releases to the Milford Daily News, the Town Crier, the cable TV. We have a, a running list of all the things that we do. So, um, you, I, I wouldn't even know where else to, to try to do more outreach. I don't know if we could handle more, more clients coming in.
I think, you know, I think it's incumbent upon all of us, even though everybody's doing a great job, it's a great program. You know, there might be a senior citizen out there or two or whatever that may need the service. And I think it always should be incumbent upon us to try to reach out.
Absolutely.
Do we have, like, flyers, nice flyers that we can maybe drop off? I know, like, where I work, right next door, there are a couple of physicians. And there are a lot of senior citizens that go near. So if we had some flyers, you know, nicely done.
We have newsletters that we can send, I mean, we can drop them at the doctors, absolutely.
You never know, there might be someone who might see it and maybe call, give you a call.
Great idea, Dino, yeah, we can do that.
Whatever we can do.
We could, yeah. Yeah. And of course, our newsletter is on the website. It's on the town's website. So if anybody doesn't get it, they can call us to get on the mailing list or they can go online and, and download it.
But sometimes maybe a senior citizen may not have a computer or whatever.
No, they don't know how to do that, no, they don't know how to do it.
And then we have the Shine program, right? That's a great program.
Unbelievable. Shine is, it, we have the regional office for Shine. Um, we have more clients coming in. How they find out about Shine is, is beyond me because they're coming from all the different towns. But the, the, the Shine counselors know everything there is about health insurance. And they're able to bring somebody in and go through what they're, what they have now and give them options. You know, this may not be the best plan for you, you might want to look at something else. They don't tell them what to do. They just give them lots of options so they, and it, so they can make an informed decision on how they want to move forward. So they're, they've been a great asset. Ed Roth is the chairman of our council on aging. And honest, honestly, I don't know what I'd do without Ed. He's just, he's such a, a big advocate for the seniors and he's a good-sounding board. And he's, he's been a great help to me. Everyone's a great, I got to tell you, I got the best staff.
Yeah.
Between Dolores and Jona and.
So if someone like, uh, I don't know, sometimes an elderly person may not have anybody's siblings or whatever. It's like medical bills sometimes are very difficult to look at and try to figure out. If they brought, if they had a medical question or a bill, would that be appropriate?
Absolutely, Catherine would take it. Catherine, Catherine is such an advocate for the seniors and, and she'll do anything she can to help them. And you know, Dino, we do do the birthday list. And, and let me tell you, they make phone calls constantly. And Catherine makes a lot of them herself and she makes sure, and they, not, I mean, she makes sure that they're okay, do they need anything? And she goes two steps beyond because if she doesn't see someone for a week or two, she'll call them up. And she'll say, you know, "I haven't seen you, is everything okay?"
Oh, that's nice.
And she follows up. It doesn't just, you know, it doesn't end there. If they, she'll make, she'll visit them if she needs to. I mean, she's, she goes above and beyond the call of her duty. And I think because most of the staff has been there and the volunteers have been there, they notice when somebody's missing. So we're able to, you know, make that phone call, make that gesture, make sure everybody's okay. And it's, it just seems to be working out really, really well. I couldn't be happier with, with everything that's going on down there. And we even had a, um, intern from, from your office come in. And I still have him. He's a straight volunteer.
Loves that.
And he's wonderful. He's been such a help to us.
And he's very skilled in computers application, right?
Very skilled. He's, he's taken us with that new database and he's, he's going through it, person by person and cleaning it up.
Loves that volunteerism.
Yeah, so, I mean, I, I really can't say enough about the Senior Center. I think the town is so lucky to have such a beautiful facility and, and an active facility as well.
I think most people know about it, most people use it. And hopefully, we, we can do more outreach that, that to, uh, to attract the seniors who aren't using it for whatever reason. And their reputation is, uh, you know, second to none. I was in Springfield a couple of months ago and I met somebody and they were asking me, once they found out about, I was from Milford, they were asking about the Senior Center, I guess they had been there. They said, "Wow, we don't have this around here." So it's just a great program and.
It is.
Hey, and whatever we can do for the, uh, seniors, I think it's all our responsibility. And I think Milford has always been like that, to help out and do whatever we can for people who are, uh, are in a new stage of their life.
They're going to be the majority of the population before long, so.
Yeah.
With the baby boomers coming in.
Yeah.
It's, it's, that's my next thing, to get the baby boomers in.
Sure.
Yeah.
Yeah. No, great job, Sue. And we would just want to have you come in and talk about all the programs. And also, uh, most importantly, to thank you for the work that you've done and that you've carried on beautifully over the past year. And it's just, uh, amazing, uh, things happening at the Senior Center.
It is, thank you.
Brian?
Yeah, no, thank you. Um, he, he, you know, when I was down there Friday on the ten-year, uh, dinner that you had, um, which was a lot of fun, by the way.
It was a lot of fun.
Um, you know, I was just thinking, and i- it's just funny how things work out. You know, I remember going back when we were trying to get that project started. And, you know, you, you, you were there from the beginning because we were always going to wrap in Community Development Block grant money with part of the application. And I know you remember all of the things that we went through, um, just the location itself. I mean, I don't know if people recall, but, you know, that was a dump, literally a dump.
It was.
It was, it was a DEP site, contaminated soil, it was a dump. Um, you know, that part of the town, um, certainly wasn't like it is now. And I know there was a lot of criticism when, um, we sought to locate there because they thought it was a bad part of town. But, you know, what, what that really did was spur the development in that area. You know, restaurants have come in, the athletic facility next door, the business next door, now Blair House is expanding. That's a very active, vibrant area.
Yes, it is.
And the town of Milford caused that by putting that new Senior Center there. And, you know, at, at the time, I mean, I suppose, you know, obviously, we, you know, Ruth Ann was, would be envisioned to retire at some time. But, you know, I, we, we, we never dreamed that, you know, you would come on to be the director, you know, ten-plus years after Ruth Ann. Um, you know, but you have and you've done such a great job in one year. You've, you've hit the ground running, you've really carried on where, where Ruth Ann, you know, ended. Um, there's no question that you've increased the amount of participation and attendance at the Senior Center. I mean, I don't need to see, you know, whatever stats or reports or whatever, all you've got to do is walk in the building. I mean, there is stuff flying in every room. And, um, you know, it wasn't always that way, it started out slow. Uh, you know, I remember when we were building it and, you know, people were questioning why we were putting in a seventy-two-spot parking lot. The old center had seven spots. Well, you're not going to need that, who are you going to get there, seventy-two spaces? The parking lot's not enough.
No, it isn't.
You know, now you're parking on North Bow, you're going up Jefferson, um, y- y- you know what I mean? So, you know, the fact that, that, that people said that it was, you know, a building and, and nothing more. Well, you know, that building, that facility provided the, the impetus and the opportunity Well, you know, that building, that facility provided the, the impetus and the opportunity for Ruth Ann and now you to offer all of these programs and services to the elders of our community. So it's, it's really, um, so gratifying to see how that project has, has, has gone over the last ten years for, for the town of Milford. And how fortunate we've been, you know, to have people like Ruth Ann and like you, uh, really at the head of the ship. Because you, you've just, both of you have just done such a great job in fostering these programs, develop them, developing them, making it, um, warm and inviting for seniors to be there. You know, some senior centers are very institutional, uh, they're very rigid, they're, they're not particularly attractive. Um, and, and they don't get a whole lot of, of, of energy and attendance. Um, you know, that's not the case down there. It's like one big party, you know? I, I mean, I know you have a lot of very serious programs going on, you do a lot of, um, um, things that are very helpful. But you know, unless you make it fun and inviting, you're not gonna get the, 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 the other types of things that, that need to be developed. Um, so I think you've just done such a wonderful job there. It's, it's, again, it's just so, you know, pleasing to me to see that servicing the community, developing that area of town. The building has clearly withstood the test of time. I think that, you know, as closely as we analyze that project, we tried to develop it so that it was, um, a minimal amount of maintenance, um, that, that it would really kind of, you know, proceed along without a whole lot of physical attention to it. And, you know, it's, it still looks brand new. And, you know, I think Bert and, uh, uh, you know, the other volunteers who work with that deserve a, a lot of, um, uh, credit for doing that. Um, you know, Bert is, he runs a tight ship too, you know, so you gotta be, make sure, make sure your shoes are clean when you, when you go in the Senior Center. Um, you know, so, so that's really nice to see. It's, it's been gratifying to see the building grow because, you know, we, we planned sixteen thousand square feet. Not all of it was finished.
Right.
Because at the time we did it, we really didn't know what kind of programs we're gonna be able to offer. We didn't know who was gonna come down there, but we all had the thought that it was gonna happen. And, and, and that there's gonna be a lot of services available and, and we're gonna need the space for it. And we accommodated that space and now you're growing into it. Um, one of the last things that Ruth Ann had the chance to do was to do over that upstairs room where the Shine, uh, uh, people are now, which was always my favorite room.
Yeah.
And, you know, her and I used to butt heads because that wasn't developed right from day one. I thought it was beautiful, you know? It's a great room, you know, so that's nice to see that, that open and active. And, you know, your man cave now, you know, it's tough getting Bert out of there, but you know, that's, you know, that's, that, that's...
It's a great addition.
That's another great room. And, and that was just, you know, unfinished space that was put in, um, foreseeing eventual use, eventual programs, eventual attendance, that now the town is, is benefiting from at really a minimal expense. You know, because everything was roughed in, so all we had to do was the finish work. So now, I think you've only got two unfinished rooms up there?
I do.
Okay, so the million dollar question. Are you, do you have any plans or any thoughts about, you know, utilizing some of the, so either one of those spaces?
I do, I have a plan for one of the, the biggest room up there. And I would like to turn that into the fitness center. Because we do not have a room that's big enough to accommodate all the seniors and all the programs that we're, we have going on. Most of our fitness programs are, are happening in the Milford room, in the big rooms.
Mm-hmm.
Where, where, we, we should be having different things going on down there. So Bert constantly is setting up tables, taking down tables, setting up tables, taking down tables. Because we don't have enough room in our, um, fitness room that, that we have right now, which is still upstairs, but it's too small for the Zumba class, it's too small for the safe exercise class, it's way too small for the hospital classes. It just doesn't accommodate the, the amount of participants that we have now. And my vision is to have one room designated as fitness, and that's it. And when you have, um, a program going on, you have a class going on, it's going on up there. Our seniors walk in the building, they don't know where they're going. Is Zumba down the hall? Is it upstairs? You know, is it gonna, is there enough room for us today? Um, so I really think that what we need to do is turn that room into the, into a fitness center and, um...
So let me ask you this. So, so you, you're talking about the last room on the right?
Right.
On the second floor?
Yes.
Okay, and that, um, that, that's pretty much storage now, correct?
It is. It's storage.
So, so where would you move all of that stuff out in the shed?
Into our other unfinished room. We still have plenty of room in the other. And you know what? I think I would leave that right now for storage, 'cause it's the only place we have to store things.
Right.
So, um, I think it would work out beautifully.
Right.
If we could do that.
Um, well, let me ask you, you know, um, to, you know, would you be able to, uh, put together a proposal to, to get that finished so that we can possibly consider it for the fall town meeting?
You bet.
Okay.
Sure.
If I could ask you to submit that to the town administrator?
Yeah, work with Rick.
As soon as you can. Um, I can't imagine it's, it's, you know, it's gonna be an exorbitant sum of money. Again, you know, the place is all roughed in, but at the same time, you know, I, I understand what you're saying. And no- number one, you know, the, you know, the great room, you know, it really shouldn't be a fitness room.
No.
Do you know what I mean? It's not, it wasn't designed for that. Um, and secondly, you know, I think you're right. I mean, you know, that is your largest room up there and, and that would make the most sense for your, for your fitness.
It would make a great fitness.
Whether you wanna have equipment.
Right.
Or whether you wanna have, you know, yoga or whatever it is.
I think we could do both. I think we could have equipment on one side and we could have a class going on at the same time.
Yeah.
So, you know, I think the room's big enough for that.
Well, can you put together a proposal?
I will do my best.
And get it to the town administrator so we can take a look at that?
Absolutely. Yeah.
And hopefully consider that for the fall town meeting?
Absolutely. I would appreciate that.
Yeah. No, thank you. And, uh, the ten-year event, please, you know, thank Bobby DeVita and, and his crew.
Great job.
It was, it was a great event, you know, and again, it was so well attended. Um, everybody seemed to be enjoying themselves. Uh, Bobby and his brother Billy was there, they, they worked really hard, you know, a bunch of their friends were there. Um, it's just a really nice thing that they do. So, you know, please thank them again for us.
I will. I will.
Thanks, Brian. Bill?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, so first of all, the one thing I want to tell you that I've heard, uh, about the Senior Center and the recent, uh, your, your entrance into the, the position is that you're not afraid to change. And so I'd give you, I'd give you a lot of accolades for that. Um, I know sometimes, uh, that group can be tough on change. Um, but at the same time, I think that, uh, the changes you've, you've brought in have put your fingerprint on it. And I think, uh, the staff and the, the people that take part in the activities are responding to that. So I've heard a lot of great things. Um, you know, I think, I, you know, I, I wanna just say something in that I, you know, I know you know it, but I just want to make sure that folks understand the tremendous work that's done there. A generation ago, many of the people that you're representing and serve, providing services to would have been homebound. Uh, they would have been isolated, they would have lost, you know, they've lost a spouse or lost their driving ability, uh, would, would become isolated. And so with, with the issues associated with senior depression, um, it's just very, very important that people understand the tremendous service that you and your group do. I know, I know you know it, but I want to remind people that might be listening. Um, the number of volunteers, they're volunteering, they're volunteering and they're providing a service. And, and Milford's been, always been fortunate that they've had great volunteers. But I know the volunteers are getting something out of that as well.
Oh, absolutely.
And so there's also benefit to the volunteers as well as the seniors they're servicing. You know, this, this has less to do with the building. It has all to do with the culture that you create and the staff that follows up on that and the direction you set. So I, I, you know, I want to talk about the human capital as opposed to the, the physical brick and mortar. And, and I want to thank you, encourage you to keep going with, with changes. Um, I, I think as generations change, programs need to change, as activities change, technology changes, all of these things, seniors are still inquisitive. And as inquisitive as they can be, they still need assistance to learn and understand. Um, and lastly, I want to say that you're not just helping the seniors and that you're helping their families. Because there are many people who take time off of work or quit work so that they can take care of their, their elder parents or their elder aunt or whomever it may be as a family member. With the benefits that you provide and the services that you provide and your staff, maybe families are ma- are making it a little bit, it's being made a little bit easier with the services that you're helping to provide. So...
I hope so.
I can say that from personal experience. Um, because I know in situations within my family, somebody, uh, might be housebound, might be more isolated if, if not for the things that we're doing as a family, but also, uh, taking advantage of within the Senior Center. So I want to thank you from a personal level and I also, uh, want to just encourage you to keep doing great things.
Thank you.
Thank you.
It's my pleasure to work there, I have to tell you.
It's our pleasure to have you, Sue.
It's really my pleasure and, and I'm honored and, and I'm blessed because they're wonderful people and...
No question.
It's a good fit. I just have to say it's a really good fit. We're all happy together.
I'm afraid to call bingo again because if you make a mistake, they're not threatened or intimidated. If the chief is there and he has a weapon, so...
He does, and they don't care.
They still yell at him.
They do.
And I hear about it that night.
But no, Sue, thanks for everything and I know...
Thank you.
We're very proud of what you've done. And also the people in Milford, the seniors and all that, the families, as Bill and Brian have said, are also especially proud of, uh, what you've done for our seniors. Okay?
Keep doing great things.
Thank you so much. Have a good night.
Have a good night.
All right. Okay, that concludes the, uh, public hearings and scheduled appointments. At this time, we'll go to the, uh, town administrator's report. Rick?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, hopefully a final report on the window project, the painters and carpenters completed the finished painting and adjustment of the town hall windows during the week of August fourth. I specifically want to thank town engineer Vani Reese and senior custodian Carlos Benjamin for their efforts in helping to complete this somewhat unique project. Uh, we have received, uh, Chief Tom Olafman has been informed by CVS Pharmacy and the Partnership TM for Drug-Free Kids that our application for a free drug collection unit has been approved and the completed units, uh, will be shipped, uh, this month. Uh, at a par meeting, I was asked to speak with David Condry regarding a water main break on East Main Street. Uh, he informed me that, uh, that particular main is an old cast iron main. He's having his engineers review the main and he will determine options to, uh, fully resolve, um, that issue. Um, Milford TV has made a request to install new cameras and add one additional camera and add two new wireless microphone receivers, uh, in this room. Also, they will be replacing their existing desk with a new one. Uh, all costs for this new equipment will be, uh, paid by them. Um, a pre-bid sitewalk was held at the Milford Pond, uh, project this morning between ten and noon. Present at the site were Scott Christofouli, Mike Brashani, Vani Reese and myself, representing the town. Also present were several staff from the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers. We, uh, received approximately fourteen interested parties attended, uh, who may be potential, uh, general contractors for the project. Uh, the pre-bid meeting included initial project review at the Cedar Street Boat Ramp, followed by optional walks at the Milford Water Company easement and to Clocks Island. Uh, interested parties were required to write their questions and all questions presented were answered at the time of the meeting. And official response to questions will be submitted via, uh, an addendum. The bid opening is tentatively scheduled for September ninth, two thousand and fourteen, uh, at two P.M. at the USACE facility in Concord, Mass. Uh, and finally, uh, I've been informed by Senator Moore and Representative Fernandez that the legislature has been successful in overriding the governor's veto of fifty thousand dollars in the fiscal year two thousand and fifteen state budget, uh, for critical improvements needed, uh, to Fino Field. So hopefully, uh, we'll see, uh, that money soon and, um, we will make some improvements, uh, to Fino Field, which, uh, I think does need, it's still a good, a good field, but I think it does need, uh, some, some updates. And that's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Uh, Brian, any questions? Well, Rick?
Uh, not really. Um, I obviously support, uh, Milford TV's, uh, requests for the new cameras and whatever other equipment they feel is necessary. I think they've done a wonderful job throughout the community broadcasting so many different events. Um, and just want to continue to support their efforts. Uh, and then also acknowledge the hard work, um, and dedication from both Senator Moore and Representative Fernandez. Um, not only did they continue to fight for that money for Fino Field, but, uh, they also, uh, arranged a fifty thousand dollar appropriation for the youth center as well, which, uh, could be used for operations or for the, uh, building projects. So, um, you know, again, they, both of them continue to provide excellent leadership and, and service, uh, at the state level for our community. So I'd like to thank them.
Okay, thanks, Brian. Bill?
Any questions, Will?
No, no questions. It did remind me, um, actually in the Milford TV piece, that when they, when, in looking at Cameron, I'm supportive of this as well because there are enough meetings beyond the selectmen's meetings that are also being broadcast out of Room Three. Um, but, you know, one of the things that we had signed up for, uh, in support of Milford TV was annual review of, um, what their, what their capital needs were and what their capital assets were. I think that was part of the contract. If you could review that contract, I've not seen anything since I signed it a couple of years ago. I want to make sure that we stay close to that as a board. Um, because it's things like this where there are opportunities, uh, to make improvements with those capital dollars and those dollars that we transfer into that, that program. So, uh, um, if we could, uh, get that and go back and look at that contract, that would be helpful. Um, but other than that, supportive of all the projects and, uh, interested to see how, uh, they come along. Um, the only last thing, I guess, what is a drug collection kit that Chief Tom Olafman, uh, was able to get?
Uh, basically what it does, it's created, uh, because they recognize the importance of safely removing basically expired and unwanted, uh, prescription drugs from households, uh, where they could otherwise become a source for, uh, basically drug abuse.
Abuse, yeah.
Diversion, uh, uh, so it's basically a tool that the chief is using to just basically fight against prescription drug abuse.
So you, can you describe how it works or is that the chief better suited to do that?
Well, basically, as I understand it, it's a...
Where would it be?
It's a completed unit.
How would people use it?
It's, it's, it's at the police station and people would be able to bring their prescription drugs there. Then they'd, they'd put in the kit as I believe and then they are...
Disposed of.
Disposed of.
Properly disposed, okay.
He could better...
Okay. No, that, that describes it.
How I understand it works.
That describes it, okay. I appreciate that. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, thanks, Bill. Rick, anything on Cedar Street, Gibbs Gas Station?
Uh, uh, not anything further. He was, uh, given a warning citation, asked to contact us. Uh, we'll be following up with John Erickson, uh, in the morning. John has been out.
Yeah, just one thing about that Gibbs Gas Station. Um, I think the light has been knocked down right in the corner of the lot on, on Cedar Street and I believe, um, East Main Street. The light has been knocked down two or three times. Because the, the trailer trucks can't make it. The other item is that, uh, just looking at, when I go home that way, uh, trying to, we're all trying to come up with ideas for, uh, to improve or lessen the traffic or make it move more quickly. Um, if we could obtain, well, a portion of that property or even a greater portion by having a domain to, uh, to do something with the, with the roadway. If we were able to have much sooner like a, a right and turn onto Cedar Street, I think that would help the traffic flow in the overall, uh, location. So maybe, you know, if, when you have a chance, talk to town council, talk to Vani Reese and the police chief, just to ascertain their viewpoints on that, uh, and maybe get back to us at, at, at a certain time.
Sure.
But I think that would do something. I mean, the way traffic is, any idea that we have, I think, should be explored. And if it doesn't, if it's not feasible, fine, but I think we should explore it in order to try to help out the whole situation. The other thing that I was thinking about too is when people take that right-hand, left-hand turn into Haywood Street, that really ties up. That creates a lot of bottleneck. If we had something like a, like a two-hour, let's say from four-thirty to sixteen, no left-hand turn onto Haywood Street, what would that do? Would that be something that would be beneficial? Would it hinder everything else? I don't know. But if, like today I was coming across and there were people, there were three cars trying to take left-hand turns and the whole thing gets bogged down. So just try to, you know, ascertain from, once again, those officials that are directly involved, the town engineer, town planner, police chief, uh, just to see what they, they, they think about that. And then we could, you know, take it to the board and then we can go from there. Okay, anything on their old business? Uh, oh, no, we have old business, we have Middle School East building appointment. This would be for the thirteen member from the reuse committee of, uh, Middle School East. Uh, Brian, what's the pleasure?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I would like to, uh, move to appoint Deborah Small as the, um, member for the, uh, Middle School East Committee. It's, um, they, they were all good applicants, but, uh, I think, um, Deb has a, a, a unique background that could be very helpful for that committee.
Yeah, I believe, uh, her, her school background and, uh, her dedication to children throughout the years make her a great candidate. I'd be happy to second.
And she is also a town meeting member. Uh, we were looking for that. And, uh, she has a lot of time to, to devote to this type of project. So Rick, now we have a motion and seconded and that's unanimous. We have a full committee, we have thirteen good individuals. Uh, Bill is our representative on that committee. And, uh, you know, reach out and hopefully they can have their first meeting after Labor Day.
Yes, in September.
I think the mission is clear and all that and let's get to work. And then hopefully in a couple of months, three months, they can report back to us. Okay. Uh, nicer Columbus, no, I'm sorry. Special town meeting date, Rick?
Uh, actually, if I could backtrack, there is one add-on. Um, there is a deed that the town council has prepared from the town of Milford to Route eighty-five Realty Corp., um, which is an add-on in your packet. You should have, if you don't, you know, you're more than welcome to, uh, take mine.
So Rick, what is that exactly?
E two. E two.
Yeah, I don't have it.
Basically, there was a, uh, you remember, uh, this past week, we completed the sale of two acres on Beaver Street.
Okay.
That's Route eighty-five Realty Corp. That has been completed. The final act is a deed from the board to Route eighty-five Realty Corp. for any remaining fee interest in the town in the discontinued portion of Old Beaver Street. Uh, I actually have a deed here, the town council... I actually have a deed here the town council has prepared for your signature.
I signed this one. Was this the one with the typo or without the typo?
The typo was on the front page, so-
This is the typo on the front. Well, your signature, your signature page is clean.
Doesn't matter. There you go. So the board is so inclined to vote to approve that and also to sign.
I'd move, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Motion by Bill, seconded by Brian. Any discussion? All in favor, unanimous? Okay, just to go back to old business for a second. Bill, you had something else?
Yep. I just wanted to see if we could get an update on a few things we've talked about in Milford TV. Rick, I had asked at a prior meeting about Milford Water Company and specifically the gate valve and hydrant flushing, and I just wanted to see if they were, if there was any update on whether they're in compliance with DEP orders?
There is. I will have a report for the board probably later this week.
Okay.
But the short version would be, the order that was issued was actually not an order, was a recommendation. So they are in compliance with DEP doing the one-third of the hydrants and the maintenance each year. DEP has been in there a number of times. In fact, the deputy fire chief has spoken with the DEP representative indicating that they are satisfied with all of the work that has been done. Also, to our knowledge, there are no fire hydrants that are-
Out of service?
Out of service, excuse me. And I will have a more detailed report.
Okay.
But yes, that's-
No, that's a good update.
That's the update there, but I will have a written report for the board.
And a few meetings ago, I had asked about the restroom facility situation at the high school and what the status was with the school department with the, with the old facility until the new facility is turned over to us.
Yeah, it is my understanding that there was a delay, there was an issue with the tennis courts, and also I believe the old bathroom is not in a proper working order as in a state of disrepair, as I understand it. They are working on it. I know they've had another meeting of the field committee, perhaps Selectman Murray can amplify on this for me. I am told that obviously the football season is fast approaching, that we should be up and ready to go forward. But that's about all I was able to gather on that.
So they're, they're not going to maintain the existing restroom facility until the new one's up?
That's correct, to my knowledge. Yes.
Okay.
That hadn't been operable for quite some time and that's one of the reasons why we went forward to build a new restroom facility.
I did have conversations with the park commissioner. He, he kind of echoed those thoughts to me.
Well, that's a shame because the, the area's used a great deal and the communities put a fair amount of dollars into that and I just didn't realize that as soon as we went into constructing a new facility, they weren't going to put any effort into the old one. And, you know, I brought up, I brought it up in the context of the softball tournaments that were held at that softball field as an example and it would have been helpful not to have to rent porta-potties there. Do you know what the status is going to be for the football season?
I, again, Brian, any-
And I'm talking about the old one, I'm not-
The, the old one was never used for softball.
No.
The old one was never used for softball.
It was. It was, so if you talk, if you talk to the league-
It wasn't used in the eighties that I was there, so the old one was never used, but fact of the matter is it had fallen into disrepair. I'm not sure at what point, you know, the parks commission stopped using it, but, you know, we've been targeting the new facility and, you know, we, we, we had a construction issue with the new facility and, you know, that's hopefully going to be rectified within the next week or so, which should open it up for the facility. But, you know, the old facility was, you know, not planned to be used long-term on this at all.
Okay.
You need any more information, Bill?
Well, I, I guess, not knowing when the new facility's going to open, knowing that the old facility isn't there, it had been used in prior year for some twelve-year-old softball tournament activity. They did allow that. And specifically, just so we're clear, you know, I, I'm looking to the school department to, to be responsible for their land and properties. So if, if that building is not available, there's no restroom facility in the interim while we're in this limbo state with the new facility, I'm confused. It's like, to me, it's almost like renovating a house. Things happen that are unforeseen, but keeping one bathroom while you demolish another one seems to make sense to me. And, you know, I'd like a clear explanation from the school department.
From the school department, okay.
Okay. And the new business?
I'm sorry, there was one other thing, Mr. Chairman. And I had asked about a sign that was blocking some of the businesses and specifically one of the problem areas on, on Main Street with the new construction project on Main Street. There was just a gigantic four ninety-five sign that partially obscures part of the Oliva property as an example.
Right.
Is there, I'm just curious if there was an update on that?
The initial determination was they were not going to let us reduce the sign, but town engineer Vani Reese is following up with them and she thinks we may be able to make some headway. But that was the initial determination.
All right, if, if we're not making much progress, I'd encourage, maybe through you, town administrator, and to link up with Senator Moore and Representative Fernandez to see if there's additional traction. Maybe they can keep the ball-
Sure.
-moving forward that way.
Yep.
But just, if you could, keep the board informed on-
I will.
That's us. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, anything else? Okay. New business, Rick, special town meeting?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I am recommending a fall town meeting date of October twentieth. Select would open warrant today, it would close twelve noon Thursday on September eleventh. Obviously, if a second date is needed, it would be October twenty-second.
Okay, motion by Brian, seconded by Bill.
Second.
And that's unanimous. Knights of Columbus, they're going to be asking local stores for a Tootsie Roll Drive and that will be on, collect donations on September twenty-sixth, twenty-seventh, twenty-eighth, as well as October third, fourth and fifth. And Fridays, we would like to stand outside your store six to nine P.M. and on Saturdays and Sundays from nine A.M. to six P.M. And this is fundraising efforts by the Knights of Columbus to help those in need in our community. It's a motion. It's also been approved by the police chief.
What's the, what's the specific request? I just don't see the application. I'm not confused by what it is, other than is it, I didn't get an application here.
That's the only thing I got.
What type of, yeah, what type of license or what type of request they're making? Is it permit to obstruct or?
I guess as close as we could call it, yes, it would be that, but-
Right, so I'd be happy to second a, a application for a permit to obstruct.
And this is also going to be approved by the chief?
Yep.
Correct.
Both are seconded, that's unanimous. Rick, I take the next one about national grid tunnel tree removal?
Yes, it's, I think we had one of these before. They want to remove thirteen trees along the right-of-way on, on Summer Street as a list that is attached in your packet. You can see most of them are, they have a defect or defective condition, weak species, base rot, internal decay, stress cracks, et cetera. So they're asking for permission to remove those. Any homeowners that are abutting, permission has been obtained from them on the abutting property, so the board needs to sign if they could. The permit that I have here, that would authorize them if they have permission.
I'd make a motion for the chairman to be authorized to sign on behalf of the board.
Sure, okay, move and seconded for the, to go forward? Next we have, I'll sign that in a second. Next we have a speed determination, Mass DOT Reservoir Street. Once again, I've always had difficulty with this. We asked for a speed determination. It comes back, Reservoir Road thirty miles an hour, please note that the packet lists an eighty-five percentile speed of thirty-eight to thirty-seven, which makes it unlikely that posted speed of thirty miles per hour can be supported. Given that this is a thickly settled area, as defined in Mass General Law Chapter ninety-one, the statutory speed limit in accordance with Mass General Law Chapter ninety, Section seventeen, is thirty miles an hour. Therefore, it is my recommendation that the town remove the existing speeds limit signs and rely upon the statutory speed, speed limit of thirty miles an hour. Rick, can we get clarification from the chief? We've had these all along, past many, many years.
Sure.
I don't know what that really means. And is there any way to appeal that if we feel it's important?
I did check with him on that and I guess it's statutory, so you cannot appeal the DOT determination. Specifically, I had a conversation with him regarding more specifically Medway Road.
Yeah, that's when I had questions about-
Which is, I think, you probably do have questions about. But I am going to follow up with him and Vani because I would like to get more clarification and I think the board would like more clarification. But the simple explanation is that in that eighty-fifth percentile, if the speed, and again, I'm going to the one oh-nine one, is, I think it's forty-three miles per hour or less, then they will not authorize the thirty mile per hour speed signs.
Okay, we can get some clarification.
It looks as though it's, I guess, and I'm sure Tom can tell us, but it looks as though it's really part of the process, you know, to see if we can get, I guess, authorization from the highway department, from the DOT-
DOT, yeah.
To, to put a particular speed limit on there. They apparently issue a decision and then it appears as though we can then rely upon the statutory limit of a thickly settled area.
That's pretty much the process, correct.
So I think Tom is, you know, you know, trying to get to point C by going to A and B.
Yeah, yeah.
You know, so, but, but, you know, it probably would make more sense to get that information directly from him.
Yes, we are going to be meeting next week to discuss some of these issues and some of the other issues the board has brought up.
Okay. Next, police chief, children warning signs on Purchase Street. And the recommendation is to recommend the children warning signs we place on Purchase Street as just north of Ebbin Street and south just after two eighteen Purchase Street so that motorists will be warned of large number of young children. And a motion?
I'll move.
Motion by Brian, seconded by Bill. Any discussion? All in favor?
I think there's something else to-
Yeah, the only addition, he also wants a replacement. If you look, there's a photo of, of a slow warning sign near the intersection of Taylor and Purchase Street. It just is not readable.
No.
Recognizable.
Does he need a motion for us to replace an existing sign?
I don't think he does, but he just wanted to bring that to your attention, that he will be doing that.
Good.
Okay, motion by Brian, seconded by Bill.
I'll move, sure.
Any discussion? All in favor? Unanimous. Okay, Rick, the town administrator, legal assistant recommendation?
Yes, this position was posted or advertised, excuse me, in the Milford Daily News on the town website. We received fourteen applicants for the position. Town council Moody and myself interviewed the number of candidates down to five. We interviewed all five on Wednesday, July thirtieth. We did have what we felt were some very experienced and qualified individuals. We are recommending Melissa Als Tomas. We believe her skills, her background would be ideal for this position. She has a, she's a graduate of Suffolk University with a Bachelor of Science in Business Administration. She has a major in business management and a minor in paralegal studies. She has worked as a legal assistant for a local office, law office, and as you know, most recently served as interim director of the Community Development Office. So we are recommending with the board's approval, her for the position. She has, as you know, already been in the employment of the town, so we would recommend to your board that you seek, allow me to seek personnel board approval for placement of Melissa at grade seven, step four, on the hourly rated position schedule with an hourly rate of twenty-six dollars and thirty-six cents.
And Rick, if I could ask a question, how is that, the placement at that step and grade, arrived at?
We, we were just justifying, she has been here a number of years, so to start her at step one, we did not think would be proper. We want to recognize her, obviously, years of service here in the, for the town of Milford and that's why we are recommending the elevated step four.
And for that, we have to go to the personnel board, right?
It has to be personnel board approval, correct.
Brian?
Yeah, no, I'll be glad to make the motion to approve that. Melissa is eminently qualified for this position. She's done a great job with the CDBG office, both as a coordinator and now as the interim director. You know, she has a paralegal certificate and had also worked in a law office for a number of years, so I, I think she'll make a, a fine addition.
Okay, motion by Brian?
Yeah, I would agree that her, her background and her personality, knowing Melissa, makes her uniquely suited for this role and happy to see that she applied for it, happy to see that she was the strongest candidate among the pool. Glad to see there were so many applicants, but I'd be happy to second that motion.
Okay, seconded by Bill. Any other discussion? All in favor? Oppose, unanimous. Rick, the technology support technician?
Yes, this petition, position was also advertised in the Milford Daily News on the town website. Deadline was July twenty-eighth. We received a total of forty-four applications for this position. Chris Moran, finance committee member, Paul Blivis, our current IT director, and myself then reviewed the applications. We narrowed the field to eight candidates to interview for the position on Monday, March eleventh, Tuesday, August twelfth. The three of us interviewed seven finalists for the position. One candidate withdrew his name from consideration after we had selected him to be interviewed. Very difficult, a number of good, qualified applicants for this position. We are recommending Brandon Vandell for the position. We like the fact that he served as a network data manager in the Dudley Charlton Regional School District. He also served in the Uxbridge Public School System for five years. He's completed courses in PC service and support at Clark University. We liked that he had considerable experience in both hardware and software applications. He also has worked on server builds and configuration. Again, we did really like the fact that he has been in a school setting. We think there's going to be a number, a great deal of work to do there. So if the recommendation is approved, we are requesting that Brendan Vandell be appointed at grade six, step one, with a starting hourly rate of twenty-one dollars and sixty-three cents. I also would request that he be allowed to begin working a week from today on August twenty-fifth, two thousand and fourteen.
Okay. Is there a motion? Motion by Brian?
Yeah, I'm happy to see that in the last two appointments that we have, they're Milford residents and we know we have qualified Milford candidates and it's added bonus to make sure that we're hiring local and taking care of our own. Thank you.
Seconded by Bill. Any other discussion? If not, all in favor, Mr. Vandell is recommended by the town administrator. All in favor? Oppose, unanimous. And next is that Danksteyex, and this is Mike Shane, does a great job, permit to obstruct. This will be for Sunday, October nineteenth, a fundraiser. Begin at the Italian Vets and there'll be a walk, bike path, head towards Hopkinton, cross Dill street, continue on the bike path, turn around, go through Shadow Brook and then end up at the Italian Vets. And that will be on Sunday, October nineteenth, in a rain date of Sunday, October twenty-sixth.
I'll move.
Eleven thirty to, twelve to four P.M.
Be happy to second.
Motion by Brian, seconded by Bill. Any discussion? If not, all in favor? Oppose, unanimous. We have, we're very lucky to have Brian as a dog hearing's officer. That's a very, Danksteyex's job is very difficult. Not only are we dealing with dogs, but most of the times it's turf wars between neighbors and tonight we have three dog hearings, findings and recommendations and Brian will let us have the information on that. Brian?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Essentially, I had three hearings on August twelfth, so they're all consolidated here. The first one concerned the matter of the Milford Animal Control Officer versus William E. Eden. And I'll just read the findings of fact. William E. Eden lives at fifty-six Dill Street, Milford. Mr. Eden is the owner of a German shorthaired pointer mix male dog named Andy. Andy has, without provocation, attacked and bitten individuals at the premises on four occasions, March twenty-fourth, two thousand and eleven, August seventh, two thousand and twelve, June first, two thousand and thirteen, and April eleventh, two thousand and fourteen, as described in the report before you. Pursuant to General Laws Chapter one forty, Section one fifty-seven, I find that Mr. Eden's dog, Andy, is a dangerous dog and I recommend that this board adopt as an order the following. Number one, Andy shall be confined to the household at fifty-six Dill Street, Milford, and shall only be out of doors in the presence of William E. Eden. Two, a beware of dogs sign shall be posted on the front and side doors of the premises. Three, if Mr. Eden is found in violation of this order, Andy shall be subject to seizure and impoundment by the Milford Police Department or Milford Animal Control Department. And further, Mr. Eden would be ordered to immediately surrender to the Milford Town Clerk the license and tags in Mr. Eden's possession and prohibited from licensing a dog within the Commonwealth for five years. And number four, this finding shall be reported to the Milford Town Clerk in accordance with GL Chapter one forty, Section one fifty-seven H.
Mr. Chairman, I'd move that we accept- Mr. Chairman, I'd move that we, uh, accept those conditions.
Motion, uh, by Bill, that we accept the recommendations of the hearings officer. Uh, seconded. Any discussion, all in favor, opposed, unanimous. The next one, right?
Second matter that, uh, I heard was Kathleen M. Fisher versus Gary and Sharon Levitt. And again, the findings of fact, uh, Gary and Sharon Levitt reside at fifty-one South Central Street in Milford. They are the owners of two German Shepherd Spade female dogs named Sarah and Sierra. Sarah is subject to the terms of an order of this board, which is dated August ninth, two thousand and ten. Sierra, on April thirteenth, two thousand and fourteen, without provocation, attacked and bit the rubber sole of the sneaker of Kathleen Fisher while she was on South Central Street, across the street from the Levitt's residence. Pursuant to GL, Chapter one forty, Section one fifty-seven, I find that the Levitt's dog, Sierra, is a dangerous dog. I recommend this board adopt the following as an order. Number one, the Levitt's dog, Sierra, shall at all times be confined to the fenced-in portion of the Levitt's yard, including the backyard area and kennel that presently exists upon the premises. Number two, otherwise, Sierra shall be securely and humanely muzzled. Number three, if the Levitts are found in violation of this order, Sierra shall be subject to seizure and impoundment by the Milford Police Department or Milford Animal Control Department, and further, the Levitts would be ordered to immediately surrender to the Milford Town Clerk the license and tags in their possession, and prohibited from licensing a dog within the Commonwealth for five years. And number four, this finding shall be reported to the Milford Town Clerk in accordance with GL, Chapter one forty, Section one fifty-seven H.
Thank you, Bill.
Mr. Chairman, I'd be happy to make a recommendation to approve the recommendations the hearing officer.
Motion by Bill, there's a second, uh, all in favor, opposed, unanimous. Brian?
And lastly, Mr. Chairman, it was the matter of Sandra Burke versus Richard and Anne Lorenz. Uh, again, the findings of fact, Richard and Anne Lorenz live at twenty Idarola Ave in Milford. They are the owners of a mixed, a mixed neutered male dog named Duke and a mixed Spade female dog named Daisy. On June seventeenth, two thousand and fourteen, Duke and Daisy, without provocation, came from the Lorenz residence and attacked a dog under the control of Sandra Burke while they were walking on Idarola Avenue. And number four, pursuant to GL, Chapter one forty, Section one fifty-seven, I find that the Lorenzas' dogs, Duke and Daisy, are dangerous dogs. Uh, it is my recommendation that this board adopt the following as an order. Number one, the Lorenz shall construct an interior fence within their garage to prevent Duke and Daisy from exiting the household at that location. Number two, at all other times while on said premises, Duke and Daisy shall be confined in the fenced-in portion of twenty Idarola Ave. Number three, if the Lorenzas are found in violation of this order, Duke and Daisy shall be subject to seizure and impoundment by the Milford Police Department or Milford Animal Control Department, and further, the Lorenz would be ordered to immediately surrender to the Milford Town Clerk the license and tags in their possession, and prohibited from licensing a dog within the Commonwealth for five years. And number five, this finding shall be reported to the Milford Town Clerk in accordance with GL, Chapter one forty, Section one fifty-seven H.
Thanks, Brian. Motion by, uh, Bill.
Move.
And there's a second on the recommendations of the hearings officer. Any discussion, all in favor, opposed, unanimous. Thanks, Brian.
Thank you, and, and let me just add, before we leave this, just, you know, the great help and the, and the good work that our animal control officer, Rochelle Thompson, does. Um, you know, while we have a few hearings here, she probably prevents, you know, dozens from, from getting to that level, and during these hearings, she, she's very, very helpful. She's very knowledgeable. Uh, you know, the town is very lucky to have her in that position.
As you said, when something happens, we've all received calls, when something happens, someone has to be there. It's, a lot of times, it's at night, and it's a very complicated, you know, tedious job. And Rick, at some point, we should look at that. Uh, at one time, we had like four or five dog officers, two or three assistants. Now, I don't know how many we have, and I just think it's, uh, you know, difficult for one person to handle everything, especially when she may be on vacation, maybe out sick, so, uh, that's a department that, you know, a lot of people sometimes laugh at, but it's a very important department, and when something happens, you want immediate action. So we should look at that to see if, uh, you can make any recommendations as far as. You'll get your check in the mail next week, all right?
Yeah, dog biscuit.
Okay, and next is, uh, Treisman, one-day license. This is for, uh, Sunday, uh, August thirty-first.
I'll move.
Yeah, the first one is an all-alcoholic license.
One day, yeah.
And live entertainment.
Eleven to one. There's actually two motions, right? And then the second one is live entertainment?
Correct.
And that goes to midnight?
Twelve noon to midnight, correct.
All right, so ban, ban going to midnight, and alcohol served to one o'clock.
Correct.
So I'd be happy to, well, the second, the first motion on the all-alcoholic beverage?
The motion?
I'll move.
Second. Any discussion, all in favor?
And live entertainment, I'd be happy to move to support that.
Gee, can we just make sure, like, when some of these people fill out these, uh, a lot of times, it's, you know, illegible, and things aren't complete, can we make sure that when people, they take it serious? Because this information is most important when we're reviewing it.
Yep.
Yeah, I struggled to.
That was a difficult.
I'm sure I understood what they were trying to do.
Okay, Cafe Sorento is, uh, looking for a fundraiser for the Marines Building Fund. This will be on September twenty-first, six o'clock in the back parking lot, Clambake. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Brian, seconded by Bill, and that's unanimous. Next, the Italian Vets, uh, September sixth, uh, ten to ten. This would be for a, uh...
Cookout?
Cookout.
I'll move.
Okay, motion?
Seconded.
Seconded. Any discussion, all in favor, opposed, unanimous. Ski Olly's Pizza Bar, this is for August thirtieth, uh, My One Wish Bike Run from twelve noon to ten P.M. Motion by, uh...
I'll move.
Brian?
Second.
Seconded by Bill. Any discussion, all in favor, unit, unanimous. The, let me see, is this associated with the last one? Rick, F nineteen is different from F sixteen, right?
F sixteen is a request by Sidney De Jesus, the director of the Milford Youth Center, to dispose of the surplus property, um, by having a yard sale or what have you.
Motion by Brian, seconded by Bill. Any discussion, all in favor, opposed, unanimous. Then we have a couple of amendments that, uh, we received from Larry Duncan, the town planner, and he's asking these to, to be approved, uh, to be sent to the planning board for public hearing, and then for a report at the October twentieth special town meeting. Motion?
I'll move.
Uh, it's a motion to remand to planning for hearings. Okay, I'd be happy to second.
Motion by Brian, seconded by Bill. Any discussion? That's unanimous. And the last is another one of these percentiles for Medway Road. We've already talked about that, but they don't support, uh, a posted speed of thirty miles an hour, and we'll get more information. And Rick, you'll also work with the chief and also, uh, Ronnie Reese on a, a plan in, uh, trying to make that road safer?
We'll be discussing that, yes, we will be. And there's one more add-on on new business, Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Yep.
Go ahead, Rick.
Basically, this is an add-on attached as a letter from Greater Milford Realty, uh, with proposed terms for rental of property at twenty-five dash twenty-seven Congress Street by the Mu, Milford Youth Center as a temporary space to house their programs during the renovation period. Uh, what we're looking for is, should the board agree to proceed further, uh, we would look for a vote, uh, to authorize town council to begin negotiations for a specific lease agreement, uh, for this property. I believe the landlord is a company called S, an S R T's, RT. Um, that's the building, and, uh, there is a broker involved, uh, who is Meg McElroy.
Just a quick question, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, quick.
Rick, who's, who's making the request of the board? I have a proposal by Greater Milford Realty going to the youth center. Has the youth center, um, directors voted on supporting this? Do you, do we know?
I don't know for a fact, but I believe they, they, this was just happened just quickly.
From Sidney De Jesus, and the youth commission is actively trying to find a temporary relocation during the construction.
No, I understand, but this is actually addressed to Mr. De Jesus.
Yes.
It's not coming from him.
Correct.
So it's, it's created by Milford Realty, uh, sent to the director of the senior center.
The youth center?
I mean, the youth center, sorry. We just discussed it.
Correct.
And, so I'm just, I, I, what I want to understand is where they are in the process. If the, that the youth center directors have reviewed this proposal, are in favor of getting council, I'm trying not to get ahead of the youth center.
Okay.
And the directors specifically. Is this something they'd like to pursue? And how do I know that?
Well, this is necessary because, you know, we need to empty the building if we want to start renovation work next month. So, you know, the youth commission has empowered Sidney to seek all alternatives for a temporary placement, and Sidney has been, uh...
I, and I just don't see the request from Sidney. I'm looking for the request from Sidney. This is a letter to Sidney. Is there a letter that accompanied that that I didn't receive, or?
Uh, he, he, it emailed it to me, um, asking to get it on the agenda for tonight, and I emailed it to Rick.
Okay, I, I didn't see that. I only see a proposal. So, um, I'm happy to, to remand to council to, to review and make that motion.
Okay. Thank you.
Motion by Bill, seconded by Brian. Any discussion, all in favor, opposed, unanimous. So that has to be done within a month?
Oh, yeah, sure, yeah. Yeah, we're, uh, you know, we're gonna have a bid opening September fifth. We have a, uh, Amory Renovation Committee meeting on September tenth. Hopefully, if we can award.
The filed sub-bids are actually, I think, due next week, August twenty-seventh, I believe, so.
The G.C.'s coming in on the fifth.
Correct.
We've got a meeting on the tenth.
Okay.
And we hope that we can make short work of the award, sign a contract, and get somebody in there to start work before the month of September's over.
Before, okay, and the new business, uh, before we get to Brian and Bill, Rick?
Yep.
Can you, uh, a couple, a couple of residents had asked questions about Verizon, and we wrote to, I mean, this explanation is fine, but as we said, I don't know if the, if the response answered the questions of the petition is.
Okay.
And this is always very, very complex. I mean, what I'd like to do is, is, um, you know, put this explanation on the Milford web, town web, and also, uh, and also invite Ms. Reddish to come in to talk about this. So there's a person in front of us, I mean, when she responds, she says, "Dear municipal official, well, I think we should have a little more personal contact," and have her come in. So I'd like to have her come in to talk about these issues, okay?
Sure, yep.
Because, I mean, this becomes complicated all the time. I mean, it's just they go up twice a year, there's all kinds of new prices, and we just take it for granted, and the bill becomes exorbitant. And, uh, I don't understand it most of the times. Uh, also, uh, we had asked the building commissioner, uh, for some property, uh, information on, I had asked him about, um, well, there's a letter here from, talking about Temple Street, it's, uh, it's raised, and we also were saved, we saved money because of the work of the highway, so they had, it's crossed with Sufu Lee. I had asked him about a couple of properties on four sixty-seven East Main Street and twelve West Street. Um, can you just talk about those? And then there was another property that I asked you today, I know he was out today, but I would, you know, like for you to, uh, you know, talk about tomorrow, 'cause I think there are a couple of properties on East Main Street, but maybe can you just review the information that he's provided to us?
Yeah, the one on four sixty-seven East Main Street is abandoned. Um, he believes it's, uh, unsafe pending further interior inspections. Reached out to the owner, um, can't find the current owner's address. Tax bills have been returned, though the taxes are not delinquent, so, um, further investigation showed that the property is in the foreclosure process. Uh, town council has been, uh, involved, and it appears that the foreclosure is imminent. Um, we now need to determine who the lender is, uh, and then once ownership of the property is assumed, we can reach out to that, uh, entity or that institution. Um, the property at twelve West Street, uh, he says is becoming a nuisance due to the overgrowth of planting beds around the front and sides. Uh, it is bordering on violating the nuisance law. Uh, the house is unoccupied, has been winterized. Um, he feels that this is typically action taken by a bank during also the foreclosure, uh, process. Uh, however, research of the registry deeds has not indicated any foreclosure, uh, action having been filed. Uh, notice has been sent to the owner, um, and basically that's where those two, uh, properties are. I also will reach out to him, I have through a, a voicemail to him on the second property you were talking about, I believe, Dean, at, uh, on East Main Street. Um, so those are the two properties. I also think, he also gave, I think, uh, I believe, uh, Slackman Buckley was looking for, uh, just a list of where he's at with various properties, so that you would have a point of reference, so that we're not duplicating. I didn't realize, he was doing the twelve West Street one, for example, and now we know that he is. So, uh, he is now going to be providing me to provide to you monthly reports, so hopefully we can see almost, I don't know if we can use the word double poll, but we can see month to month what's happening, what's been added, what's been taken care of. Uh, so, uh, we'll hopefully make that a monthly occurrence, so that the board can have a better handle on which properties he's been, um, investigating, where complaints have might have been filed, and what processes, uh, what progress, excuse me, if any, is being made to, to resolve the issue at each particular property.
Yeah, and I, uh, when I called him on those properties, he, he worked on it, uh, pretty properly, but it just, you know, goes to show that there are many, many areas where, uh, you know, his department and Laurie, the zoning officer, most important, they provide a tremendous function in helping to keep our neighborhoods, uh, clean and respectable, and, uh, so I appreciate that, and just make sure you can stay on it. And also...
Yes.
I was just surprised by the report that he provided to us, uh, you know, uh, all kinds of unregistered vehicles, uh, construction businesses where they're not supposed to be, uh, nuisance, uh, work without permits, unregistered apartments going on and all that, so, uh, you know, his department is most important, the task force is most important. So we just have to make sure, Rick, that that, uh, you know, that's a major focus.
Sure.
And, uh, I'd like to have John come in sometime next month to give us an update, and also, uh, you know, talk about some of the things that are going on, and, but this report was, uh, you know, well done, but it just shows that there's a lot of work and there's a lot of things going on, and, you know, we always have to keep our eyes open to make sure that, uh, you know, people aren't doing things that are against zoning bylaws, uh, trying to do things, uh, inappropriately, you know?
Sure.
Can you talk about the, uh, the Bo's, uh, sound presentation next week?
Uh, basically, I have reached out to, uh, a representative who has given us an initial demonstration. He has agreed to give us a second demonstration next Tuesday at six thirty, uh, P.M. in the upper town hall. Um, I have sent letters and reached out to the various precinct captains, uh, for town meeting to see if they would like to invite, or will invite, some town meeting members to maybe get a firsthand listen, so to speak, and, and to see the equipment and ask, ask questions if they'd like. Also extended invitations to, uh, the finance committee, capital improvement committee, uh, and various boards. Um, it is something that I think, uh, when you do hear it, uh, you will see the difference and hear the difference. Um, so we want to give as many people an opportunity to actually, uh, see what a new sound system would do, uh, for the acoustics in the upper town hall, and it's next Tuesday, the twenty-sixth, at six thirty P.M.
So, Rick, we'll be sending a letter out to all the media and...
Yes.
Okay, Ed Thompson, all that.
They will all be notified, yes.
Yeah, and hopefully we can extend, uh, an invitation to, to all the town meeting members, if someone wants to show up, if someone wants to come there for the, uh, to hear the presentation, and also for anybody who, um, has a hearing impairment, uh, who is a town meeting member, most important to show up, and, uh, I think when you hear this presentation, demonstration of the sound system, it's really remarkable, and then hopefully we can talk about it again and maybe have an article for the, uh, uh, special town meeting. But this is something that the committee's been working on, and if, uh, this system is really, really good, there's no comparison, unbelievable.
What, what company's providing that presentation?
Uh, it's a company called Ad Tech, and it's a Bo's representative.
Bo's representative, okay.
Yeah.
Okay, uh, Brian, anything on the new business?
No, I, I don't have anything, Mr. Chairman. No, I don't have anything, Mr. Chairman.
No.
No, I don't have anything, but I'd like to follow up on that, obviously, you know, depending on where this goes, and I know this has got a long way to go, but I, just for public understanding, as an employee of Bose, it's, you know, if it gets to a vote, I just wanted to be clear, I wouldn't be able to participate, obviously. But I'm very interested, and I think, no matter what and whose sound system it is, I'm glad Dino brought this up, I think it's long overdue, and thank you for bringing it up, Dino, and Rick, thank you for following up.
Yeah, I just think when people hear it.
Yeah, I'm interested.
The clarity, and also for people with hearing disabilities, it's just amazing. So we'll see what happens.
Okay.
So nothing else on the new business? I think we addressed the correspondence, eleven Temple Street. We have John Erickson's letter. John Erickson, the arraignment date, September twelfth, for the individual that we had a criminal complaint, and that the power of inspections has filed at district court. This is in conjunction with the ongoing effort to enforce the town of Milford zoning bylaw which restricts large commercial vehicles from being parked at the resident. Rick?
Yes.
On the biom measure thing, can you just briefly talk about that?
Yes.
Decertification?
Yes, if the board remembers, in December of two thousand and thirteen, the Economic Development Incentive Program manager of the Mass Office of Business Development, Eileen Rogan, called. She added Biomasure Inc. to the list of projects to be decertified at their December state board meeting. By way of background, Biomasure had an E.D.I.P. project in November, two thousand and four, with a twelve-year local incentive agreement. Their intent at the time was to build a research and manufacturing facility at twenty-seven Maple Street. In March of last year, they sold the site to Baxter Healthcare Corp., who was not interested in taking advantage of the tax credits and has agreed to decertify, decertify the project. At our December second, two thousand and thirteen, meeting, this was also presented to the board, and there was no objection, as there was no apparent reason to oppose decertification. And this is the final letter indicating that they are, will be decertified.
Okay, anything else, Brian?
No, I don't have anything.
No, nothing further, Mr. Chairman?
We do have a couple of items for our executive session, collective bargaining with town council, and collective bargaining highway with Attorney Pat Nari. Is there motions for executive session? Motion by Brian, Bill, second?
Second.
For those purposes, roll call vote?
Aye.
Aye.
In favor, aye, and we will not be coming back into open session. Thank you very much.